Okay, very good. Hello, everybody. This is the meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Belgrade Fire Department is six oh one. Sarah Ling at the chair is unable to attend tonight, and so I'm going to be chairing the meeting as vice chair. Um, why don't we start with introductions? We could start. Penny?
Penny Morales.
Rich Baker. We're both alternate members, but I guess we'll be acting as regular members then.
That's correct.
Nick Sakaro.
I'm George Seal.
Craig O'Gorman.
Don Duras, Boston, could was the officer.
If you folks could introduce yourselves.
Don Hamon, Hamon Lumber.
Mike Hammond, Hammond Lumber.
Bill Martin.
Very good. Thank you for coming. First item of business tonight is the completion of the Hammond lumber application, which I missed the first review of that for completion. But I believe all of you were in attendance, so I'm going to abstain from voting just for continuity and safety.
I think I might have missed that as well. Yeah.
Okay, so with, we still have, we still have a, a forum. And and so that shouldn't be a problem with respect to moving forward. I did watch the video and recording of the meeting and, and I believe the only item missing from the checklist, the application completion checklist was the letter from the Belgrade Fire Department, Dan McKenzie Fire Chief, which we now have. And have you seen a copy of this by chance? From Dan McKenzie? No? Wait, I would just, and Don, I would just one thing I'll ask people to discuss a little bit is the last sentence in there. When we get to that point. But I wanted you to be aware of his question about the Knox box. Um, the I think to Mr. Mark, are you here for this application or for something else?
Listen.
Oh, just listen, okay. So, um, I, I, the reason I ask is I, I don't want to waste people's time. Normally, we would ask the applicant to go through a brief summary of what they're proposing. But I don't know if that's really necessary, given this is a fairly simple application and all, and the rest of you had reviewed this certainly for completion, but it looked like you got into some of the substances wrong.
The only reason I would think there would be any need or whatever is if Mr. Martin
Right.
Felt that he liked to have a sort of it's kind of not discussion, but the explanation from the Hammond.
No, no, um, all of this. Your property is within five hundred feet, however, of, of the Hammond property. Is that correct? Hammond lumber?
Probably more than that.
More than that? Okay, right. So you're just here to?
Yeah, I'm a big fan of Hammond lumber, so I can.
Okay, yeah. So.
Mr. Martin did ask me a question earlier. Is this thing to ride lumber down to cabinet quality?
You'd need a nuclear power plant for that, wouldn't you? Maybe in the northern Maine, huh? Well, why don't we just spend with that unless there's something you folks want to say to present to the board that you think is important for us to hear since the last meeting?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, very good. So questions or comments from the three of you that were you were at the last meeting about the application or?
That was kind of the impression. We have three meetings, three parts to this application. When did I get that idea?
Typically, it's two.
Yeah.
If, if we were in a situation where we still had our own material and we need further discussion whatever, but even then, we may be able to do it too, but in this case here, it's pretty well together.
The, the others were the others were notified to this meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Right. So before we move on further, I think what I need to do is find the part of the checklist that refers to the letter from the fire chief and check that off, initial and dated, even though Sarah's already signed us. I'm going to start the last. Good statement, fire chief. Oh, that's Sheriff's Fire Chief. That's blank. Okay. So I'm going to check this is complete if everybody hopefully, everybody's seen that letter. It's, it's in your pile papers here. So I'm going to check that off as complete. Paperwork in order. Here's the rest of your application. And so as a matter of discussion, I, I'm not entirely sure what Dan McKenzie meant by the last sentence in his letter and it's
Uh, you say last sentence, for the second for the last sentence.
Well, no, this actually, I would, well, the last two sentences, I mean, you already are proposing a Knox box is my understanding, and I think what he's asking is just to ensure that the fire department will have access to that. That's not a problem, is it?
We, we have a longstanding relationship with Belgrade Fire Department in that they can come in and use their wet pond, they can use our hydrant down the road, so they have unbridled access.
Okay.
Any parts on site.
Well, that's what I assume, not to mention half your employee, that, that your employees make up half the fire department of our work.
The Knox box we have on our retail store, so that's a piece of cake. Yeah.
Okay. So that sounds like a non-issue to me. You good with that, Peter? All right. I just wanted to make sure we follow up on Dan's comment there.
We've, we've been working collaboratively with Dan and generated remains since they're the electrician of record on our kiln building.
Okay.
There'll be, there'll be electrician of record on this building as well.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It's, we've been working.
There's no lack of coordination is what you're saying.
Well, he puts the key back, of course.
So are we ready, or the three of you, ready to go through the findings of fact in law at this point? Make a decision. Okay.
I presume that this letter is a duplicate of the one we just did for the kiln building, which I never saw.
Uh, very similar. I can get you a copy to go ahead.
I don't need one, but I presume it's the same verbiage.
Pretty much.
Because we didn't talk about the Knox box on the planer building. They had four axes.
Yeah, I, I don't remember seeing that verbiage on the other one, but it's in a file. If there was an issue, it would have been.
But we didn't talk about the Knox box on planer building, so I'm not sure if this was a, a new good idea that we had, or we had that stipulation on the planer mill as well, because I never saw this other for the planer buildings. We'll do whatever, we'll do whatever, whatever Dan wants, so.
We don't even know that unless the fire chief requests it, I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that specifically across the board requires a Knox box other than at solar facilities.
I think it was mentioned last time.
Was it? Okay.
It does. We talked about a lot, noise and dust and I think it was part of your plan. I mean, it was in this plan as well, but it may not have been mentioned in the letter.
So you've been through this drill before, so just bear with us. Uh, the this is our, the legal requirement of the ordinance as well as state law, and so this will be kind of Belgrade findings of fact and conclusions of law under the commercial development review ordinance for a dry kiln. Applicant name Hammond Lumber Company, and then it give particulars. The application summary, project summary, I, I just put six thousand square foot dry kiln. That's acceptable to everybody. Was a waiver request submitted? No, it was not. Uh, the application review process. The application was accepted, it complete. That was last meeting, that was eleven, two, twenty-three.
That was legally tonight.
Uh, was a site visit conducted? No. Board meeting dates, that would be tonight, the second and the sixteenth. Few, quite few findings. The board finds that the application for the subject project is complete and the applicable fee has been paid in full. Blah, 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 blah. Oh, the applicant has requested writing board waive the following ordinance sets requirements that's not applicable. First item of substance here, the board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable soil erosion. Based on the application submittals, the project design plan dated.
I'm told.
And nine, no, that's wrong. Go with the date that you signed it.
Then, then four.
Then four. Thank you. Anyway. So as a matter of quote, board finds that the project is soon will not cause soil erosion. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, double or negative.
Will not, right.
Oh, no.
Will not, okay. Will not, by a vote of three two, four, zero against and two abstain. Get a rhythm here. Next item, board finds project will not or will have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands.
Will not, will not.
Will not. Yeah. And for basis, I have our usual language based on the application submittals in the public record. Word finds that the project will not or will have an adverse impact on lake pond or on a lake pond or streams.
Will not.
Will not, will not. Good made of rubber stamp language.
Yeah, I know.
Just put stat.
You know. Well, that, I mean, this was the, this was one of the few things that was easier during the pandemic when we're doing this electronically, because you could just you know, cut and paste it in or copy and paste all that in for each item. Um, board finds that the project will not or will provide for adequate stormwater management.
Will, will, will.
These questions are written, so you have to pay attention to them. Three, yes, zero, no, two abstain. Board finds that the project will not or will provide adequate sewage disposal. This is applicable.
I don't think there's anything new in that.
Yeah.
We should do sewage disposal associated with this. Right? It could be an A.
Yeah. Board finds that the project is not or is located in a floodplain area.
Is.
No. Is not. Is not in the floodplain area. Board finds that the project is not or is located in a floodplain area. Actually, this goes on and, and conforms with the Belgrade floodplain ordinance. So it's, it's, yeah. It's not. Three, yes. Zero, no. Two abstain. Uh, F, the board finds that the project will not or will result in air or water pollution.
Will not.
Will not.
Will not.
Okay, will not. Three will nots. Three, yes. Zero, no, two abstain. Board finds that the project will not or will have sufficient drinking water for current and foreseeable needs of the development.
Do you have any drinking water in this building that's associated with your well?
No.
Say N A.
Okay, we're in agreement, N A. Board finds that the project long or in conjunction with existing activities will not or will adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater.
Will not. Will not, will not.
Okay. Three, will not. Zero, no. Two abstain. Board finds that proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste in performance with all local regulations and that the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to town transfer facility will not or will exceed its capacity. Is this applicable to dry kiln?
I don't know that Danny's been engaged.
Really? No solid waste going to the transfer station from this, is there?
No.
No.
There's just, there's just nominal, nominal condensate that's going into the stormwater system.
Okay.
Into the wet pond.
Okay, yeah. So no solid waste then.
N A.
N A, okay. So we're in agreement, N A, not applicable. Board finds that the project will not or will have a significant detrimental impact on adjacent land uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, or their effects from the project.
Will not.
Will not, will not.
Will not. Three will nots. Three, yes. Zero, no. We abstain. Board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highways or roads.
Oh.
It's a wa, I, I saw in the application it was going to be a wash because so I would say it meets it.
Well, it's not an area of traffic.
So we're, we're entering through the same
Yeah.
retail store entrance or adding a new.
Right, so I think it meets the standard and ordinance would be my suggestion, but ultimately you guys call.
They will. Will.
Will not, yeah. Yes, we all three men will not. So the board finds that the project will not provide unreasonable highway or public. So that's three, yes. Zero, no, and two abstain. Board finds that the project to the maximum, maximum extent possible will not or will have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic or archaeological sites.
Will not.
Will not, will not.
Okay. In unanimous, will not. Yes. Abstain.
But they're going to be able to get out of there without taking your jacket on.
I'm going as fast as I can. Might be home in time to see the news on public TV. That is, that is if we're not doing fundraising. Um, the board finds that the project to the maximum extent possible will not or will have an adverse in effect on significant wildlife habitat and critical natural areas.
Or, no.
Three, yes, zero, no, two abstain. Board finds that the project does not conform or conforms with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances. And then it lists the ordinances. The critical ones. E, the board finds that the project will not or will unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond.
Will not, will not, will not.
Will not have it. Yes, zero, no. Two abstain. Board finds project will not or will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance.
Is that here?
The board finds that the project will not or will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance.
Will.
Will, will.
Three wills. Three, yes. Zero, no. Two abstain. Board finds that the applicant has or does not have sufficient right title or interest to undertake the development.
Has.
Has. I guess.
Three, yes. Zero, no, two abstain. As the board finds that the applicant does or does not provide for safe and adequate parking.
Could be not applicable.
Can you believe that?
Control.
Not applicable, so. E, the board finds that project will not or will conform with all applicable provisions of this ordinance, including but not limited to development standards for specific activities is sort of the catchall. Uh, so, uh, will not or will conform with all applicable.
Will.
Three, yes. Two abstain. So we're ready to make our final decision. Um, so this is for approval of the project overall. Um, but before we vote, I just want to make sure you folks are familiar with a couple of the standard conditions that come with all of these approvals. I know you've seen these before, but if you want me to, I'd be glad to read them over for you again.
Just two years.
Uh, actually, the first, I'll summarize how's that to compromise. Uh, yeah, it, it started, um, this is actually, let's see. This actually needs to change because the book ordinance was changed. It, it currently reads that construction has not been substantially started within twelve months. And that's now thirty-six months. I'll, I will initially date that. As per. And the second has to do with basically saying you're getting approved. basically saying you're getting approval for what you applied for, nothing less, nothing more. Um, but then number three is not applicable to you and since you didn't request a waiver and uh, and just that permit is transferable if you choose. But that's satisfactory to you. So with that, we're voting to um uh approve uh the project. Penny, yes. Rich Baker, yes. Craig, yes. Three, nothing, um. So three, yes, to approve, zero, no, and two abstain. And uh I will sign for Sarah. So uh with that, um, we've done our bit.
Putting there why uh two abstainers, the reason.
Well, I I guess we'll just make it clear for the minute, purpose of the minutes in the public record, uh. So both Nick and I are abstaining. It's probably, I'm glad you mentioned that, um, both because we missed the first meeting at which this application was reviewed by the board. Thank you. Anything else, um? Uh, as usual, uh Hans will provide a copy of this to you as well as uh the building permit that goes hand in hand with it. Are there any questions for us, you?
No, no, very good.
And while we're on the public record, um, I would, I just wanna thank your, you folks and your company for the generous donation you made to the name uh, community foundation regarding uh Lewiston. People who were impacted by that mass murder, so they're very generous.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your volunteerism on board.
Congrats, we'll see you next month.
No. Uh, our next item of business is, um well, on the agenda it had a budget review, but I I was under the impression that you folks actually approved the budget at the last meeting and and I saw an email where Sarah actually submitted it to the town manager. So I think.
Added something to it.
What's that?
I think she added something to it, uh. Couple hundred bucks for something.
Is it, is it something that wasn't approved and discussed at the last meeting or?
Was it postage, postage? Put, you got a new leader out there and they're assigning department for every postal expense.
Okay.
So they put a couple hundred dollars in case we have to do certified mail or something.
Okay, so not a major. No, I I I actually saw it uh online, uh, I saw, or I saw the picture sheet tech of it. Thank you, Penny, um. The um, so I think we're all done with that. Probably have the smallest budget in town government, but. Uh, and then, so the next item uh of business is the uh legal opinion we've received or I should say the response we've received from the town attorney. Uh, that is in your pile papers, uh, if you haven't seen it before. And also with that is an email that Sarah sent out this afternoon, which I I realize those of you that work for a living unlike myself, um. The uh um drafted as well, sort of with Coast Lake on, on, on that, um. On that memo from uh Phil Saucier um of Bernstein Shore. Um, I'm not sure how you, uh, to what extent you wanna um discuss this, um, or if you have, I I don't know that I'd be the right person to answer any questions you might have, uh. Uh, the um I mean, I I think I had a few key takeaways from it myself, but um basically that you know, in terms of grandfathering, which uh he, which uh Phil describes as a kind of a colloquial term. Doesn't really, you know, it it in itself, it doesn't have a legal meaning, but you know, that the terminology used in the ordinance of a, of an existing facility is not comparable to grandfathering. Uh, it's broader than that, it's, it's, uh it, it, it's both uh those facilities and businesses and other non-residential uses that existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance as well as those that may apply, um to uh for approval because they were expanding or the change of, there was a change of use. And so whatever, you know, state that facility was in at that point in time is also considered existing. He I was a little surprised with this, but that's just cuz I'm not an attorney, that uh common law apparently potentially could allow uh to um uh expand the application, the applicability of the ordinance, but he clearly recommended not doing that. And um, and that if, if uh the town or this board wished to, um do what like our shoreline zoning ordinance does where there would be a provision where after a certain not, not just a certain amount of time, but uh, that there were certain, that the landowner took measures on or act acted such that a facility was truly abandoned. You know, we could require by amending the ordinance that those if when, when brought back into use, have to apply to the ordinance.
Do you see that falling under, as an example, uh, a paper mill that uh closes up and then takes all of the equipment and moves it on and something of it fall under that uh intentional event?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, um, it, uh, it wouldn't be just a matter of a business. Uh, my take on it was it wouldn't be a matter of a, a, a business, maybe go dormant. Certainly for reasons like illness or, or uh death, deaths in the family or those kinds of things that sometimes result in longer, um, you know, sort of businesses going comatose. And um, or, or, and there may, and there probably are others, um, unless they, you know, just there were some, or over at that, they actually abandoned it. Um, is that how you saw it, Craig, or?
Yeah, but um, I don't wanna get into it too broad, I mean, it goes I mean, there's people that buy stock in investments too that hasn't been run for a while, but has been a business, I mean, let's take the little motel down here. You know?
Right.
Tried to reopen it, but it's all in place, uh, all's a slack and it's septic from there.
Aren't they living in some of those rooms?
Personally, I don't.
I mean, that's a good example.
Not necessarily, no.
They're living in it.
I don't know if they're living in a store and shit in it.
Yeah, it was, so let's say they, you know, wasn't, hadn't been turned into a residential, like apartments or, well, actually. Yeah, I mean, that, that's been, that's a good example though, because that's not been a motel as long as I've lived in Belgrade over forty years.
Almost into the village.
Yes.
Pond in front of it.
Yes, right. See, I actually thought that maybe it turned that into we don't need to go there, I thought they turned it into apartments cuz I saw a lot of utility trucks there.
No, that's his business.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, well, but, um, so I think it would take, have to, my understanding is it would require, he, he really focused on not time, but and some kind of act that abandoned the, uh, uh. And um, I, this is all, um.
Isn't really necessary in Belgrade, I mean, what's gonna be happening?
Well, that's the obvious next question, and you know, it after.
What he says include typically include abandonment or discontinuance provisions. You know, hotels definitely discontinue us.
Yeah, but, um.
First page, bottom line.
Yeah, that's, um and you know, he, he makes a big, uh, uh, an important distinction, community ordinances. Their intent is to uh eventually, so at some point in the future, if there's a non-conformant use that that non-conformant uses no longer continue, um, and it's brought into conformance with whatever the ordinance requirements are. Uh, that's not the case with this ordinance, um, and, um and so that seems to me like an important distinction and, um. Okay, here, here it is, it's at, at the bottom of the second page of the memo, uh, under question number five, um. Uh, while the town could amend the ordinance to add a specific discontinuance provision to clarify this issue going forward. Uh, and that, the issue is, um, a question that we asked, uh if it wish, could Belgrade amend the ordinance to define a time period of disuse of a pre-existing land use after which it would be considered discontinued and required to obtain approval. Um, so while the town could amend the ordinance to add a specific discontinuous provision to clarify this issue going forward, I do not recommend requiring any existing uses that did not previously require planning board review to apply for and receive development review. That is because while new wardens can include retroactivity clauses under main law, it is not clear if an ordinance could um could make, could make retroactive uh to a time prior to when the public was first aware of ordinance. Um so it, it seems to me like there's some ambiguity at minimum and uncertainty in, uh, about whether it would be in his, in Phil's opinion, whether we'd be advised to even, even if we wanted to do that, and, and I tend to a, uh, agree with Craig that I personally don't see the, at the moment anyway. Uh, and, and at least the time I've been on the plan board, a real need or a problem that it would solve for us to amend the ordinance to with, by, to add a discontinuance clause or, or disuse clause like, um um, you know, maybe others have different view of that, but, um particularly i- as long as we're diligent about enforcing, uh, the, uh current requirements that we have for that, if somebody ex- expands a facility as defined in the ordinance or changes the land use as defined in the ordinance, then they have to come and get our approval. Uh, that's my personal opinion, opinion and takeaway from, from looking at, at, at the the responses that we got.
Well, so Craig's example, the motel. Hadn't been running forty years, if they put it in a septic that's adequate for a three bedroom, is it just three bedroom or? Whatever it is. Adequate septic system, can they throw a sign up and start in a motel again tomorrow, or are they gonna come for the board?
I would tell they could throw a sign up and start to come on the motel.
I, I, I think so. Who remembers it?
You did, is, was that when you were a kid?
Well, I mean, and that's what rose to these questions in the first place, you know. I mean, that, um, and, you know, you, I mean, I understand the argument that that seems kinda silly, but um, but I, I think that's what.
And, and the infrastructure is all in place, other than the septic, so, um you know, that for, would be something I would really stand by and be in here and probably.
I mean, I, I, one help and expensive septic system, given the place is one step away from being a swamp, but.
Right, and, uh, but somebody may do it.
Yeah, somebody may do, um, I think the more common scenario is gonna be, um you know, not that extreme, um, the, to be honest with you, you know. Um, the only case I can think of and, and that I'm aware of, maybe there are others, but, um uh, there were cases I can think of, um, whereas the conversion of what was double D's to other commercial, uh, over North Belgrade to other commercial uses, but, you know, obviously double D's predated this ordinance. And, and, and eventually evolved to a marijuana growth facility, um. Um, and, um, and that didn't require, um we even discussed it, that didn't require, um approval uh under the ordinance as a, as a change of use or uh expansion in our, in our opinion. Um, the, um, I mean, there was no increase in traffic, which was one of the criteria, there's no um they weren't gonna be using large quantities of hazardous materials, which is another, um, the, um, and there was one other. Lost it. Anyway, I've talked enough.
Talking about the, uh, uh, facility, uh, down there. What, and I, I think I know what I would say the answer would be, but there's a facility there as you're coming to the lakes. Not a facility, it's, it's owned by a family now, it used to be a, a motel or something years ago. It's that big building that, uh, on the left-hand side, and a family owns it, there's like but it's, it's all residential and it's family.
In the village itself, yeah, yeah.
They wanted to go back and make that a motel. I assume they'd have to come to us because it, it's been a change of use from a motel to residential or they.
Well, it, it's residential now, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and so if they went to, if they decided to turn it into a motel or a hotel. That would be sort of the flip side of the other one. Um, um, that I would think, think based, just, you know, generally that it would then require Oh, that's right, yeah.
You did, huh?
Thirteen bathrooms in that.
And you know every one of them quite well, huh?
Rather build them up, get plumbing, I don't um, left, travel back, we all travel.
It is quite a building.
And take all the baseboard up, well, not all, but a lot of the baseboard off. The baseboard goes down behind the way they used to. The way they used to do it, they put the baseboard on first, then the hardwood floor. And then it's nailed, I mean. Down below the hardwood floor, so it conceals now.
Um.
So I had to pull all that baseboard off. That's how we rewired it. We removed all the wire that's bothering the baseboard.
Oh, wow.
It's got all brand-new wire and it's got all brand-new uh. Uh plumbing. And they just put a massive new uh septic system.
Yeah.
That's all that's true.
Um, yeah, actually, that's a good question, right? I mean, that was a good.
But that would be that's what is that's kind of the residential. That's something I mean, I don't.
Yes, quite my answer. On, did you get anything out of this? Should answers any of your questions?
I see him leaning towards having something in the ordinance to address this. Out of fairness. To all of the public. Because let's just say the board doesn't have Craig, who doesn't I mean. Right now, we're relying on, oh, somebody remembers this, somebody remembers that. How accurate is the memory versus how friendly are they with the person trying to reorganize this? Or pay this? Or Congress? What if somebody is an adversary to this person, said, oh, no, that was never there before? You know, the the not having an ordinance creates the opportunity to make up rules as you go. And if there's a. You know, if the ice cream stand down the road, Mexican Power Company closes up for a couple of years. And all of a sudden, somebody comes back and they want to make a cafe there. Is that allowable? It's it's a restaurant.
Should do.
But should they become before the board to make sure that everything's in place? You know, the safety equipment, the. The law could change. Are they going to redo the parking lot? What changes will happen? Forty years until the motel hotel, the housing. Hospitality rules have changed in the state. Not that we're involved in hospitality rules, but still. Yes, I feel it's worthy of a review and that's what this is, the review board. What if they want to make, I mean.
Yeah, I understand your point, Hans. It's it's a matter of how do you uh what kind of documentation is required to make? In 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 the case of the landlord to uh to make the case that it's a pre-existing use. And and vice versa, what documentation? Is needed on the town's part to prove that it's a um. You know, um. Not a. Pre-existing use or continuance of a pre-existing use. I don't really have a good quiet answer to that question. I've been here a year. I don't know every business that came in today, but real closet business that's in town. Somebody said, well, this is I've run this out of my house for years. It's a lot, you know. You know, like the bakery that popped up. And uh. You know, but.
Well, that's a village district too, and that's kind of where we're focusing and trying to get. Um. That's what I. If you look at the board or or nonsense, that's kind of where the village districts as well and focus on trying to get these places to do things.
Yeah, I agree with that. The the other thing too is, you know, again. If if it triggers the um. Change in use requirement or or the expansion requirement, they still would have to come before. You know, come to the board or uh or come to you depending on how, you know, what the change is, but. Um. I mean, I don't know a a good answer to, you know. Like the the motel scenario that Craig brought up.
Let's just say.
Nice and crisp and clean um versus um.
Let's just say Ann Parker. Ceases to run her stuff. And a family member or a new person buys it and says, well, we're going to continue to make baked goods here. We'll continue to have it. Voice to all, but we're going to turn this residential area into a cafe. And we're going to let people sit here and eat.
Yeah, without any expansion.
It's changing use, isn't it? But right now, like her hair is so long, if she takes those chairs out and just puts a couple of tables in there. He's going to say, no, it's always been retail here. They're just sitting there eating. She's always baked food there.
So then breakfast as well. I mean, that building is a tough one because there's a lot of multiple uses going on there. It has been for a long, long time.
And and it's been retail. And you know, changing the retail from, say, uh another use that doesn't generate that kind of traffic um. It would would trigger the ordinance, but but you know, once you're in that category already, it's assumed that. You know, the traffic won't be significantly different is the way the ordinance is worded anyway.
Right now, there's a bigger point. But not get away with this. I can't do it. Well, and there's one person.
I mean, I used to live in the village. There was in the in the early eighties, there was plenty of finger point. And that is is their way.
Yeah, I just.
When I get complaints. I mean, I I understand your point. I I don't know that. Um, this ordinance, if the town had zoning, that would be the, well. Um, yeah, if town had zoning, you know, that's that's how usually municipal government deal with these kinds of issues. Now, um Belgrade doesn't have to accept shoreline zone. And so if any of those. Properties that you you've been getting complaints about are in the shoreline zone, and I assume some of them are. You know, that ordinance. Uh also applies. And and I'm not familiar. I I off the top of my head, I can't tell you what it it says about, you know. Discontinuance and abuses and stuff, but uh. So, you know, in an area like that, there are two ordinances that apply. It isn't just the commercial development review ordinance. The motel is not in the shoreline zoning zone, and so this is the only ordinance that that would apply.
Well, I'm not going in towards lending a permit, but we aren't here.
I mean, our permits expire. Why couldn't businesses expire if it's not for this? If somebody, and this is going to come up shortly. Has a permit to do something. And then there's a death in the family. So only half of the. Permit was. Um initiated. Okay? Now they want to rebuild what they tore down. But the permit has expired and so has the. Allow the eighteen allowance in shoreline zone.
There's a permit under commercial development.
This is under shoreline.
Oh.
But I'm just saying, all of our permits have expirations.
Right.
Should that also apply to the business? The businesses cease to.
Not if it's pre-existing, well. The from. You know, maybe from the time we started with CD, you know. Well, whatever.
I mean, you know, from a legal perspective, it goes back to what I read earlier, uh you know, uh. In terms of. You know. I mean, I mean, very few ordinances are retroactive in prior to the date they're.
Asking them retroactive, let's just start making a playing field rule fair right now.
Yeah, but what you're suggesting it is it apply to uses that pre-existed. The town ever adopting this ordinance. And that's what Bill has an issue with.
Right. So what's the use of this motel now? Personal storage? Now it's going to live in here. It's residential property. It stacks as residential. It's that construction. Kind of every time. So. Where is this line going to go? Where I didn't, there has to be a. I don't want to see it, I don't know. I'm just, I see there's a gap in what we've got. There's people, there's conflict, causes conflict that I have to do. So I'm trying to make my job easier. It's all about me.
What if you just tell them it's grandfathered in?
It's everybody's sick to hear now.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
That's what it is.
Away with it, but oh, I can't.
Yeah.
You know, um, you know, my house was a brothel way back when. Can I make it a brothel now?
Yeah, it's against the law, though. But why should I go? Well, we was too much too long ago, yeah.
Yeah, historically, I mean, you go back to all the. I mean, there were more commercial uses in the mid eighteen hundreds in Belgrade than there are today. Um, I don't know how you how you deal with that. That's just, you know, my head just blew right off um under this ordinance. I mean, the. Part of it is residents of this town really thought this was a major issue, then maybe they should consider a townwide zoning. They won't, but you know, um. Because that's that's the tool that is designed to the questions you're asking, not this ordinance.
I just want to, I'm not not asking for a rule, kind of like rule. I'm asking for a sunset clause. After a business ceases to exist for eighteen months, twelve months or twenty-four months, whatever.
That's way too short.
That it. Comes back to the board for approval.
So you're suggesting that all businesses after a certain time have to come back? Because then it's a how? Well, how do you define if it's if, you know, what the pauses are, how long?
Well, three years, I don't care.
It's been long enough.
What, a lifetime?
Well, it it does like. Well, the problem is like what like what if somebody's business, uh, you know, is is failing, so they want to sell. And they sell the business with the intent of the new owner. Like in a motel, but then something happens with the finance, they buy the property, then you know, they get tied up and. You know, I don't know, you know, so you say they would have a time limit when they buy that piece of property on how long they can get that motel up and running.
Or come back here to review. And so they have to go through this process since the biggest expense or.
Most of my problems is just. Bickering going on down in the village. That's.
Exactly.
So it's just that little area. There's not a whole lot that can happen down there. Um.
I get emails last weekend because somebody had a pop-up. I don't know what they call the sale. At the. Seven Lakes Inn, the garage, the barn. They had some retail pop-up. And I got emails and complaining that they're not permitted, they're not this or that. So I bought art from that place years ago when it was an art gallery. And other people have bought T-shirts and I've seen towels and other print goods were set over there. Now it's an issue. I can't say, well, it's grandfathered. No, show us proof. That's what that's a response I got. While it shows proof and this is from.
You were around when they were selling. Um. Trying to think of her name. Um. Can't remember her name, Lord. But she had that shop there and she had an apartment up above it. Um, so there was plumbing in there and uh. Um, she was running. It passed away. That's when she got her way. Oh. Whatever was. That was.
A lot of other business owners down town saying, oh, I'm grandfathered, but. Everybody remembers that business, but those businesses, they complain about them. And I have to respond.
Well, yeah.
Directly on the select.
That's just people being competitive and complaining about each other and uh. That's the only. Problem area we have, and it's not enough to generate an amendment to the ordinance and then screwing everybody. Just comes in and wrecking room.
Just doing everybody.
I said, if we, you know, then then we'll make it.
That has to come here is that screwed.
Yes, in a way it is. Um, yes. Sometimes.
Oh, I guess that's why.
Exactly when you buy a um. Investment property and spend something all the time and then come in and, oh, we're going to get a ordinance now.
Well, they're buying it and it hasn't been going for two years, I mean.
Two years, when? Not long ago. It was two, three, five, still not long enough. I'd be talking fifteen, twenty years. If I was saving or considering something like that.
So so what the town attorney uh said about that issue, if you were gonna have a uh discontinuance provision. It has to be long enough so that uh the landlord can recoup their investment. Uh, and and uh and and he gives a great example that I hadn't thought of, and that's the built main billboard. And for a billboard, it was five years. So you can only imagine how long it might be for something of more substantial capital value. Um. The uh I don't I ordinance is used a shorter period of time and how that's justified, I'm not really sure. He doesn't address it, but. Um, the uh. It gets awfully messy pretty quick.
But we're not talking about discontinuing. Businesses, we're talking about. Just terminating a business that.
Yeah, I know, but before you can. Require that, you have to declare that business, that land, no longer a non-residential use. And that's what he's talking about, that it have you can't, the time period that you specify that to be. That that uh that motel has been out of use for, let's say, five years. It has to be linked to the length of time it takes for that. Uh, investment to amortize. And that gets, I mean, that gets, that's above my pay grade. Figure out. I mean, I I'd certainly, you know, understand your point about that it. It makes for a messy situation in in terms of not having nice clear guardrails. Um. Where everything's kind of a black and white decision, but um.
I was directed. Directed. To go give a notice of violation to a business. That I know that it existed previously. And this is why it's in my craw because it compromised my integrity.
Yeah. Um, I there's a that's a problem, but for other reasons. And I don't, I sympathize, but we can't solve that with an amendment to the ordinance.
All right, we discussed.
I I don't think personally, I don't know. Again, I've said too much, but. Anybody else wants us?
I'm learning. And I'm.
Any other thoughts, Richard?
Not really.
Let me ask this question. The after hearing all this, is there anybody that feels like we should further investigate? What do we um? The idea of adding to the ordinance, to the commercial development review ordinance. A discontinuance type of uh provision, as Phil has described, where. Of a business or other non-residential use that was. In existence prior to two thousand and one, the year that voters approved this ordinance. That after a certain number of years, whatever, some magical number of years, that it it's not in business, it. Basically automatically is declared. No longer to exist as a not commercial, as a as a commercial use.
He tells us not to do, he recommends.
Well, he 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 does kind of recommend. That he wouldn't go there.
And you're not recommended. People have done enough ordinance to submit.
Yeah, so we're just trying to say then, yes, but uh. Um. I think that must go with them. It would go with them very well.
Um, I don't know if Sarah weighed in on that at all. Let's say that Hans is right to ask. Um, for a better definition of the proper proper duration of use of a permit after abandonment. She called it a sunset clause, um.
Where are you?
Um, I I was on the underlying section of.
We've heard of.
Sorry, the last one on.
Oh, I know, okay, yeah.
Um, but. I don't.
Hmm.
Um. So she may, we'll see. I don't know that. If I agree.
I think what you're asking is, do you want to pay everybody and you have to do it?
The lady once says they want like bike shop guy and will look in his property records, there's no, you know. No previous bike shop, there's no this, no that, but how do I know, not everything's written down.
Couldn't you have used this ordinance? And what you were saying when you went to go sell and serve someone as. They have all the right in the world to do this, look at the ordinance. You, like, you could have used this in your favor, so you didn't have to, you know, jeopardize your integrity.
Well, I was being told to run an unpermitted business. Okay. Now, how many of these businesses in town have permits in their file that authorize them to run a business? Does the village have one? No.
So the select board took that into their own.
They select.
Person. Without a select board vote? Can they do that?
They did it.
I don't think that's legal.
Yeah, that doesn't sound.
No, because you can't, um. A select board member can't even tell you to call a lawyer.
Last year's fall festival was, oh, yeah, that was sixty, this is, like, retail activities.
Fall festival.
Last year. All the. I mean, the fact of the matter is, if there's no basis in, in a town ordinance for that. That it it's not gonna stand up to any kind of, and the irony is, you have people setting up vendors alongside the street, outside alongside of a truck, so like car, they work. But that was used to target. Um, can we agree that we can't solve all the problems in ordinance?
Yeah.
It pissed me off.
I'm sure.
Well, I understand that.
It's me off too, because one select board person can't tell you what they're doing. There needs to be a board. And they can't tell you to call a lawyer on some, and require, that needs to go through the board. Um, so one select board member. Unless it's been through the board, they can't order. For you to do anything. Needs to go through the board. Needs to go through the board.
Did you do what that select board member told you to do with it?
Yeah, that's what bothers me.
Huh?
That's what bothers me, I did it, yeah.
I didn't hear you.
Yes, I did, that's what bothered me.
Oh, that's a problem, sure.
I had nothing to go back on, to say, no, you know, I didn't know the difference, I had to rely on information that was given to me. And it was erroneous. After the fact, and I kept digging, I kept bonding. This part isn't true, this part isn't true, that part is not true.
Yeah, that's tough.
And I've been back to this facility, I apologized to them, but it was too late, cause I'd already given them the season, it's a. And retractor? Nope. Weekend went by, they did what I asked, they did what I requested, the weekend passed, they missed their time, they had to cancel their vendors. You have people set up on the side of the street and in the park, sell whatever it was, the crap they had. So I just wanna see some way of documenting what is determined around this town and what is not.
Well.
Cause right now, nothing's documented.
From existing, from the time we um made this. Commercial ordinance and everything is being documented, so it's just a matter of dealing with some very old. Portraits. So everything from that point on is gonna be documented. And it is, he is prior to that too, but um, not the point of when we. Adopted that, but. And now we're not gonna solve the reason, it's gonna be a bit. If you're more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think. Um, I'd like to close this discussion, I must. Uh, sorry, we can't give you satisfaction.
I wanted this to be talked about, people think about it, moving forward.
Yeah.
Cause the situation's gonna be coming up. It's gonna be an evolution or something, I'm sure.
The uh, let's move on to um. Approval of the minutes, um, and we have the minutes in our packet here for November second. And.
Should we have?
Yeah, so um. Ten nineteen, that, those minutes were already approved, weren't they?
No, they weren't, I haven't seen William Gunn yet.
Okay, so.
Still haven't.
Were they part of a package night?
No, no, we, we only, so we will only deal with uh, the minutes of eleven to. Uh, November second, which is.
You and I can't.
Yeah, yeah, you know me.
I'm staying again. The uh, so uh. Why don't you take a couple minutes to review if you haven't already and uh, and then we'll.
My name continues to be spelled wrong, my last name has. It's been brought up and.
Yeah, I know, cause it, the meeting, the meeting prior to the last one, you brought it up and and or somebody else did.
Say it real loud.
Huh?
Say it real loud. Say it out loud.
Morel, two Ls, M O R R E L L.
Kayla, I hope you saw, heard that, um.
The office can pull with the minutes?
Oh, they didn't?
Not yet. Oh, they haven't yet, it's, it's gonna happen. Probably coming.
Oh, is that right? I, I didn't hear that, when, when was that, the Sunday?
Yeah, inside of my wheelhouse.
All right, whatever, um, the uh. Take a look, minute to look more. Awesome. Um. Comments or corrections, errors, omissions?
I get a comment on the uh, old business number one. Uh, the, I think the first sentence needs to be uh changed, uh. It kind of is like a conclusion instead of the discussion. And I think it could be better worded with changing it to, there was much discussion. Regarding whether the app, this application can be approved as a larger structure within a setback area. And then the next sentence, there was also discussion about whether. The new structure can be expanded to be closer in the shoreline that was imposed on setback requirements. Um, it just, uh. I did, I'm not sure I agreed with the actual language of the first sentence, let alone it was like a conclusion. And the board as a whole didn't think that, I mean, uh, put it this way, it wasn't the board, it was some members of the board.
Right.
I think it'd just be better to say, there was much discussion regarding whether this application can be approved as a larger structure. Within a setback area.
Okay, so replace the first sentence with what you just said.
Yeah.
And amend the second sentence.
Yeah, amended so that, uh, says there was also discussion about whether, and then after that, the rest of the sentence stays the same.
Yeah, replacing it there for.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other changes?
I didn't have any myself.
Um, again, Penny's last name needs to be spelled with a second L.
In a couple places.
In a couple places, right, under board members. And wherever she made a motion.
Yeah, um, top of page two and the bottom of page two.
Right.
And page three.
Review all sign?
All sign.
Any of you all set with these minutes? Other, we just discussed.
Yeah, Rich knows better than I, but um, when I was. Looking at. This. Oh, no, um. This. That made it first, it's a need. What, what the ordinance was saying, the original structure was here, moving it back. It was still in the shoreline zone area, but most of it. Because we, we thought it was great, because they were moving it away from the shore. But it was still in the shoreline, so zoning on, uh, area, so it, the ordinance applied. And it says expansion within the buffer is, is limited to thirty percent of the floor area, although.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's an old, uh, typical, um, issue profile, that's why I think what we call it, now shoreline zone news. It used to be a, uh. Time when you could expand only by thirty percent of the floor area and volume, and that was taken. But what was made optional for towns, and we chose to get rid of that thirty percent provision. Expansion and just tie it to the amount of floor area uh within the uh. Certain seventy five feet, you get a thousand square feet, if you back more than seventy five feet. You can get fifteen hundred square feet of water of building, but thirty percent, try to ignore that when you see. Thirty percent, cause that's not part of our ordinance.
Okay. But when I was, when I was reading this, I thought, um. I thought. That's what the problem was, the setback. And in the, all the line and.
The problem was, the real problem was that he wanted a bigger building. And as Colin said in his memo, he tries to tell planning boards or whoever is training, you take the original camp. You know, you move it back as far as you can, and then if you can have further expansion, you can do it. But you can't expand closer to the water as part of an expansion, you go sideways and backwards.
Right, and that's the left side.
Yes, yeah, that, the concept is still the same, although we don't have the thirty percent, but the general concept is same.
I'm wondering whether also, along with that, um, the ordinance also declared as what is practical.
Yeah.
Practical is left, as our lawyer said, to the judgment of the panel law. And so they left it open, and who decides this, where this come from? Is it just Collins, Collins, or whatever, is that just his push, or is this actually written in law?
Written in the ordinance, yeah, what you interpreted, practical extent.
Practical extent. So where does it say? That that has to go back. You know, is this Collins' little baby? And his little wish to know, I still haven't, we haven't got that defined yet. According to our attorney, they told us, we define who's practical. No one else but us.
And I think, I think the key is, we did, or put it this way, uh. I think the, the key here is, you have to look at what the structure is there, wh- what they're tearing down. And that is essentially grandfather to go back to the greatest practical extent. Then. And what Colin is saying is, then if they want to expand that structure, they can expand it. As allowed, as if it were a non-conforming structure at that spot. If it had a non-conforming structure at this greatest practical location extent. Then. That non-conforming structure can't be expanded toward the water. But it can be expanded within the square footage limitation to either sideways or backward.
Uh, I'm not sure rehashing the review of that application tonight is appropriate, um.
Well, I'm just asking.
I don't know who's next.
Who's, who's baby is, when it says Collins, where's it written that that needs to go back? I mean.
That's just generic.
Yeah.
It just get, provide some guidance about the thought process that needs to go into it, I mean, he is a statewide coordinator for shoreline zoning. So him and the attorney general's office are certainly well authorized to make interpretations of what the state minimum shoreline zoning regulations require. And that's just the way, you know. Rich, when, when Rich was in that position, did the same, so.
Yeah.
But let's get back to the minutes and the matter at the end. And the que, and the question is, is there anything inaccurate about the description of the decision regarding the Richard's application in the minutes? Cause that's really all that's in front of us at the moment. I mean, that seems consistent with I heard on the, on the.
Yeah, but I don't. I don't have any problem with that decision, so.
Okay. Um, so could I have a motion to uh approve the minutes of November second as amended?
I'll make a motion, we approve the uh, November second, planning board meeting, minutes as amended.
On second.
Second, okay, motion by Rich Baker, seconded by Penny Morrell, uh, two Ls. Uh, all those in favor? Penny?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yes, yes.
George and Nick abstain, because they weren't at the meeting, so free in favor doesn't oppose. Next item is, um. You haunt, you're the next item.
Well, right, well, actually, I got something. How do you wanna deal with it? One of those things. Hundred acre lot, guy wants to put up six cabins. Now dimensionally, it will accommodate six primary residences, he's got a hundred acres. They're all gonna be rentals.
Oh, okay, so not a subdivision.
Not a subdivision, planning seasonal rentals. He may decide to go with the frost walls so that there'll be year round rentals. Do we need to see it as a business, cause it's probably hell. I don't think.
Actually, I may have been premature to say it's not a subdivision, it might be a subdivision, actually.
I was thinking the same.
But he's not dividing the lots, I was thinking.
That doesn't matter.
It's kind of.
A motel would be a subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, exactly what I was gonna say, you had a motel or a hotel. Yeah, yeah, exactly what I was going to say, you had a motel or a hotel and you got more than three units in it. I think that's a subdivision, more than.
All the family housing development, apartment building with more than three units would be a subdivision, but.
These are individual, these aren't connected, doesn't matter.
I'm pretty certain of that, did, I mean, double check the definition.
Because right now you've got other landowners in this town that have built houses for their children around their large acres.
And families.
What's that?
And family exclusions.
There's a, there's an exception, um.
The best guy, I'm gonna put the X, so it's wrong. Well, are we doing DNA testing?
Yeah, the, uh, again, above our pay grade, we're not in the paternity business. No, it's more seriously, um, the, uh, um, the, the definition in state statute spells that out fairly clearly, actually. For once, um, in terms of the definition.
Not dividing the lot.
Yeah.
Some roads and some cabins. I was thinking campground, more than I was thinking subdivision. In the shoreline zone?
No. Or less ordinance.
They're gonna share a set of steel. Again, that brings me to campground, more than it brings me to subdivision.
It's so like, for example, a condo development, a board of three units would again trigger the subdivision.
That would be subdivision, yeah, that's common, this is no different. But if it's seasonal, uh, what I don't know is a camping or is a condo that's seasonal. He doesn't do the seasonal conversion, puts them on stilts, it's irrelevant.
And, um, but, and, and you said these are rentals, right? Um, like a strictly sporting camp without the kitchen kind of thing? All right, never mind, that's.
I haven't seen four plans yet, I haven't crossed that, so right now we're just saying.
Yeah.
Because remember what side says, if you meet the dimensional requirements for another private residence, you can have two, three, four on a lot.
All right, let's do something at a time here.
There's only the dimensional requirements.
So, um, this is, you may recall when we redid the subdivision ordinance, uh, we didn't have all the definitions put in the ordinance, just the ones that aren't in state law.
I was just looking at.
And I, and I, I printed out the ones in state law, my own.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, because I knew, I wouldn't remember it. Um, let's see, give me a minute to. Um, but why don't I just read the whole damn thing? Uh, subdivision, subdivision means division of a tract or parcel land into three or more lots within a five-year period that begins on or after September twenty-third nineteen seventy-one. This definition applies whether the division is accomplished by sale, lease, development, buildings, or otherwise. The terms of division also includes the division of a new structure or structures on a tract of land into three or more dwelling units. That's what you're describing.
Dividing an attractive land for dwelling units. And I, I might need to read that myself.
Yeah, um, uh, you can find it in Title Thirty-A. Um, but going back to the other part of your question, um, is, does it meet the definition of a non-residential use? Um, and therefore trigger the commercial development review ordinance? And.
Residential use, they're living in it. Then are we DNA testing, DNA testing, there's residential use on.
Non, non-residential use for development. Use of property for the, or other than residential occupancy or unimproved uses. The term shall include all uses commonly described as commercial, industrial, off, office, service, institutional, utility, and recreational uses. A use which is a mixture of residential and non-residential use shall be subject to this ordinance to the extent that its, uh, non-residential floor area or impervious services meet the ability criteria in Article Three. So that's the start of the ordinance. So I guess the question is, the answer might is maybe, it depends on the particulars.
I mean, we're not applying this to all the air, V M Bs in town. You know, if you're gonna start saying Airbnb is a non-residential use.
I'm digging through the ordinance, it says on this still. Not happening, we, we've discussed this before, I'm trying to re, re, rewind the, uh, tape machine in my brain, which. And I know we've reached the conclusion that a, a short-term rental was not enough for order of this ordinance, but I, I don't recall rationale for that decision or conclusion. Anybody else from the room?
Commercial development review?
Hmm.
Commercial development.
Yeah, as a.
Yeah, uh, you talk about like short-term rentals or somebody's camp that they're only coming up for a month and they rent it out for the rest of the summer to various parties.
Yeah, we didn't want anything with that because this, uh,
Yeah.
Short-term rentals is probably what calculated that one.
Yeah, uh, it would create a, a monster problem.
Yeah, can you imagine having all those as applications?
Yeah, yeah.
Start making them apply.
Yeah, it's our first step.
Yeah, there's thousands of applications.
No, we'd be, nobody would do, select board would have us revise the ordinance and then like flick of a finger, um. I don't know, I, I'm not thinking very clearly at the moment, Hans, um. I guess, you know, if I had, had to give an answer right now, I, I'd have to, my personal answer, I can obviously speak for the whole board, but, um, the, um, I, I, I'm not sure whether what you're describing would trigger, would meet or not meet the definition of the non-residential use, to be honest with you, it is. I'm, I'm clear about the fact that it does meet the definition of a subdivision.
Yeah, I agree, I don't know about that, subdivisions sound like.
That's what I'm describing, I'd have to read it more. Yeah.
What, uh, is happening besides renting the facilities and the other things supplied? Uh, or can I merge as your other recreational type thing as a, uh, hunting camp?
There's access to the lake, but no dock, no marina yet. But who's to say you didn't put a dock out with seven fingers on it? You know? And once put up seven camps spaced out at a private.
Done.
Yes, I'd almost say is what do we consider that place down next to Hammond Lambert, is that a residential?
Well, I was thinking the same thing and, and, uh, um, but then, you know, it just.
That's the general development district, they're allowed.
Yeah, no, Rich is saying if that was developed new tomorrow.
Yeah, what, would we say that that's commercial use or residential use? He wants to pretend it's out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
Uh, versus right next to Hammond Lambert, it's like, what would we tell them? You've got a, a commercial use, you got a company for us, or is that a, a residential use? Without studying the definition, I'm interested, it's a commercial.
Well, that, that's, that would be my, what I would kind of say as well, it is a business.
Yeah, it is.
Well, but let's throw some variables in, let's just say they build one this month, coming for another permit, do another one next month. Then they don't.
Instead, I think it's said with. Three years, a third one would require a subdivision permit.
That's separating a lot, dividing a lot, three times in five years, it's not dividing a lot. Well, you'd have to spread them out then by five years.
Yeah.
Like, because he's building different houses or cabins?
For all units.
What if somebody just wanted to do five bunkhouses so their kids have five separate quarters?
Well, shoreline zoning aside.
Well, not in shoreline zone. Just, the bunkhouse is an accessory structure.
It would be the, the answer I think would be the same.
So an accessory structure, ready to subdivision?
Yeah, I mean, who, I don't know who would ever do anything that silly, but.
Fish cans, I mean, look at Castle Island, other.
Well, yeah, well, a- again, that's just the same analogy that Rich has provided, you know, it, I mean, to, you know, that grandfather, when there was, you know, grandfather with grandfather, uh, that, so, but, you know, if you, if you built that today, that would require subdivision approval as well as shoreline zoning and, and maybe commercial.
Yeah, I, I would.
There's no question about that, in my mind, personally, and, you know, others may have different opinions, but.
Let's say Castle Island would be even more my idea of commercial than down here, because I don't think they have a, you know, here the Castle Island got a dining hall and all that.
Yeah, right, and, 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 you know, reds boats, um, but, um, I mean, they're obviously, you know, uh, renting, would be renting the cabins, um, you know, um, as a commercial enterprise in terms of making a profit. Uh, in, in return for, you know, people would pay them for that. What's next, um? You, you might want to check with the town attorney about, you know, the definition, non-residential, but, um, I'm pretty, I'm pretty, um, look at the definition of subdivision, I, I think it's fairly clear. I mean, I know, for example, um, Mark Day's, it's ancient history now, apartment building that, uh, built down there beyond the Channel Road, they've got subdivision a little way back in the eighties.
Oh, it's a multi-family structure.
Right, you know, and this is no different except there's not a batch.
I don't know, multi-family, twenty-four by twenty-four structure is not multi-family.
Well, yeah, I leave the multi-family part of it out, the multi-family dwelling unit ordinance out, I'm just talking about the subdivision ordinance.
No, I'm saying this for, I'm just wanting to know off your head if you consider a campground.
I, I mean, that, that's my shoot from the hip.
Because I'm having to read all the ordinances in detail and figure out how that's the files.
Yeah.
I'm getting tired of reading, I'll ask you.
But we, what's, what, what's it look like, uh, on the horizon for applications for the move away?
Um, we got one where they, uh, did a parcel, you know, they did the demolition of a cabin and they want to rebuild it now. But time has gone by. So, I don't know, we'll handle that one if it comes. Uh, we're hoping they have materials in this week, but they don't, so. Uh, there's another one that's ready to go, but he's not eager to have it done till spring, so I've been kicking that one down the road till, you know, it's fishing season and you want to go somewhere. Good kidding.
Well, we're on the subject of upcoming work, uh, for us, um, neither Sarah or I have heard anything from K D Todd on, uh, housing stuff, so I don't know where that's at, they've gotten their funding from the state. Uh, if that means you're working with towns like Solon that are ahead of us in, in the queue, I, I just don't know, um, probably I should check with them again.
So, um, so I guess if you wanted to try to plan a week or skipping a meeting, you can talk about that. Um, right now there's nothing for next meeting.
So, one thing I would like to suggest putting on for some discussion, and I'm not sure if that was the only thing we needed to do. I'm not sure it's worth having a meeting just for that, but the Colin had indicated that he, in the last meeting, you weren't here, Nick, I guess, but, uh, but, uh, we were discussing about me talking to Colin about whether it'd be willing to come out and do, uh, kind of a training or informational session on shoreline zoning, and he indicated that he would. And I'd like to some point discuss if we do want him to come out. If we did, would it just be our planning board and maybe the Board of Appeals? Uh, and when would it be in the wintertime when we don't have much going on? Um, where the applications aren't there.
He suggested an island area, which might be in, in the general data.
Yeah, yeah, uh, and part of me says, yeah, that's good to be him and Colin to be able to do four towns at once, or at least the people who want to come. At the same time, our ordinance is a little different and, uh, you might kind of get confused when he starts talking about thirty percent or whatever, and, uh, you know, maybe it's better if we did it as a one group or whatever. But anyway, that's the type of thing we wanted to discuss, first, if we want to do it, and secondly, how will we do it and when?
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good idea, whether it's at, you know, when, and all that needs to be discussed and, and, and maybe part of that discussion, if we decide that it would be, uh, useful, um, uh, you know, maybe we could put together a list of some of the issues we would like to see Colin address, because my take on this is, first off, we have two relatively new board members, so that would be useful to help your learning curve. Um, you know, just looking over the last six months, there have been a number of issues, even those of us that have been on the board for a while, um, you know, got confused about, um, and, um, uh, I, I mean, the key one for me was, you know, how do you look, measure linear distances, um, and, um, uh, so there's some key principles that apply statewide that, uh, it might be good to, uh, rehash and, and make sure we're all on the same page with, with D and P, um, uh, since they're the ones that, you know, would come down hard on us if we weren't doing it correctly, um.
So, Colin, let's schedule a perfect calendar of December first Thursday to seventh, second. So, call about scheduling and put the calendar up, December first Thursday, seventh, second, the, um. Secondly, it'll be on the twenty-first, which is the day I think school let out for Christmas break.
And didn't you say there might be a cost involved? We went to this code officer training, okay.
My suggestion would be if we're not gonna have a meeting, uh, that it be the second one in December, since we're getting close to the Christmas holiday. Um, traditionally, that's how boards, town boards have done it, I know. Um, from other boards I've served on, but, I mean, it, it really, it ultimately doesn't matter to me.
There's not a lot in the pipeline, and then these two cases.
Do you wanna just take it by ear and if nothing pops out and.
Yeah, I mean, if, if. Yeah, and, um. Yeah, I, I agree with that, um, and, you know, just let, get in touch with Sarah about it, you know. Good, I don't think what Rich has suggested, that I, you know, I think that in itself is not worth having a meeting solely for that. Um, and even if it was that in, in the minutes or something, but, uh, I'm not sure that's worth a meeting, but, um. But it, it, on one hand, it would, but we, I don't think we'd want to delay this too long, because otherwise. You know, you think, think ahead, you know, we probably, when we'll have time to do something like that, and take that time. Away from doing permitting, you know, we're really talking January, February, maybe early March if we're lucky.
Yeah, probably.
And then, then things start ramping up again. Although this summer, they never really did ramp up.
That's surprising.
Yeah, it was. Everybody built everything during the pandemic.
I agree. Not worth coming in for one meeting to talk about that, but it is something we already discussed before. Cause we got, we'd have to arrange it with Colin at a time when he would be available, we only meet every other. Yeah, week, so there's really, uh, probably about four different of times that he could come. Uh, and fit it in, so we have to do it.
So what are those time off? I, I mean, Thursday nights or what are, did he tell you what times?
Well, he didn't say any time, he just said that, I asked him if he, uh, um. D and P still does training for planning boards if they ask for it, and he said, yeah, we do. And get back to me with, you know, some rock or whatever, and so we haven't talked anything about timeframes or whatever.
I think it would be best if we could do it on a Thursday of a regular scheduled meeting, so that we're not having an extra meeting, I think that would. Um, it may be less, uh, difficult for people to attend.
Yeah. I'd like to bring Stuart from Seven Lakes Alliance out too. And he's held up loud and stuff.
Want to make a motion with, is that a date tonight or?
Well, why don't we just leave it with Hans to, uh, put that on the next agenda, we're gonna have a meeting.
Okay.
In the meantime, get back to Colin and just say, um, are there Thursday evenings that in the next couple of months? Would fit with your schedule.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, in case bowling night is Thursday nights for him or something.
I mean, December seventh, right now, it's looking pretty good. Is that really? I don't think there's anything's gonna come now for the end of the year. These are the two cases, they're not gonna do the work till spring anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, damn, I, I, I'm, I'm done predicting these things.
You can feel them out about December seventh.
Okay, alright.
So, are we there?
Then we're trying to move forward.
What year?
Um, anything else before we adjourn? No, okay, accept the motion for adjournment?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, I'll second.
All in favor, raise your hands, unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.